Good morning and welcome to the May 12 Minnehaha County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Ken will help you. He's in the front of the room. That will go on to routine business. Item number one is a motion. Consider a motion to approve agenda.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve county commission minutes from April 5, 2015.
Approve the minutes.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $941,819.16.
Pay the bills. Second.
The motion is second. Comments? Comment from Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, today's bills include $307,000 for software. And the Highway Department has a couple of their larger bills. Our $277,000 total. So between those two items, we're at $584,000.
Thank you. Any other comments? The motion is a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four are reports. A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for April 2015. Item B is the auditor's account of the county treasurer as of April 30, 2015. Item C is the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Report for April 2015. Those are all available at the auditor's office for review. Item number five is personnel action. Item eight is consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
So move. Second.
A motion is second. Are there any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number, or item B is a special commission action. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. Carrie Dever, Human Resources. The special commission action request I have for you today is to create the classification of limited deputy state's attorney into hire Mike Thompson at an hourly rate of $50 effective June 23. I believe you have a briefing memo from Kirsten Katmeyer on this issue. And Kirsten, of course, is here if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Kirsten? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the commission's special action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is a briefing on proposed updates to the Minnehaha County travel and meal expense policy.
I believe Robert Wilson provided you with a briefing memo on this item to let you know that the state is making some adjustments to travel and meal expense reimbursement rates. Today is just a briefing for you to consider whether or not you'd like to make a similar adjustment for Minnehaha County handbook. I've attached a copy of our current policy along with the redline edits showing you the differences in rates of pay. It would mean increasing the in-state allotment for breakfast by a dollar, lunch by $2, dinner for $3, and the out-of-state reimbursement for breakfast by $2, lunch by $3, and dinner by $4. Also, that would be a proposed increase for the mileage reimbursement from .37 a mile to .42 a mile. And if you were supportive of that, we would bring it back to you next week unless you wanted to make a decision today. And then ask for that to be effective July 1, which coincides with the state's change.
Thoughts or comments? This is a briefing. I did have one comment. I wondered if this is something we should look at at budget time, only because we have a budgeted a certain amount of money for this. By raising all those rates in this budget year, we may overexpend what we have had budgeted. And so maybe we should look at this during our budget hearings. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Barth?
I agree with you, Madam Chair. Carrie, this is optional, right? We don't have to have this.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other comments? I think, Mr. Magg, you have a comment. Otherwise...
I'm thinking. I can't talk and think at the same time. I guess the issue for me is that that's not a significant change dollar-wise. And you compare that to the federal rate. It's significantly lower than that. I don't think it's going to make a big difference on the budget. And I guess if it's going to be effective July 1, if we wait till budget time, then we're literally delaying it. I don't see any reason to do that. So I would be in favor of looking at it and adopting it next week.
So do you want to bring it back next week? And would you bring back the numbers of, maybe I talked to Ken about this, what our 2014 expenses were? Just so we kind of have an idea, right? And what we've spent so far this year and what we have budgeted for it.
We certainly could try and get our arms wrapped around that number for you.
Yeah. We talked, I talked to Ken a little bit earlier about it.
Sounds good.
If you bring that back next week, we will discuss it then.
All right. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is applications for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Morning.
Morning Pam.
We have five abatements today. We have record ID 31235 for 285.75. We have record ID 32851 for 349.34. We have record ID 33628 for 823.94. We have record ID 41457 for 248.21. And we have record ID 52615 for $722.18.
Are there any questions for Pam on the abatements? We look for a motion for A through E.
Move for a little second.
I have a motion as second to approve the abatements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Please Pam. Item number seven is notices and requests. East Dakota River Development Notice at 9:00 AM Thursday, May 14, in Brookings. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one is for DPNO 69715 for $500. The situation here is that a party sold their home on contract for deed. And while the other person possessed the property, they took out county services for $500. They didn't fulfill the contract and it reverted to the original owner. But now the property is encumbered with this $500 lien. So I would make a motion to take it off of the property and leave it on the party who received the services. Again, it would just take it off of the, basically, the owner who tried to sell it and leave it on the person who received the service.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
One second.
A motion and a second. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just make a comment that this has happened before and this is one of the hang-ups with selling contract for deed.
I have a motion and a second. Is the applicant here? I don't think so. Are there any more questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is DPNO number 77332. Ken McFarlane, were you going to speak on this one?
I can.
If you would please. This is a little more complicated.
Commissioners, this is an application for a compromise of lien submitted. And I want to just tell you that there is no real estate pending at this time for a transaction. There are two county aid liens that the applicant is seeking relief on. The first one is DPNO 77332 for $4,139.40. And this lien is strictly in the name of the applicant only. The second lien, DPNO 65578, is in the amount of $4,901.80. And that name is in, or that lien is in the name of both the applicant and her ex-husband. This is a somewhat complicated lien scenario. But what we have here is that the lien in the applicant, that's strictly in the applicant's name, DPNO 77332, is for court-appointed attorney services, not only for the applicant herself, but on behalf of two minor children as well. The second lien, 65578, that is in the name of the applicant and her ex-husband, is also primarily for, number one, attorney services for the ex-husband that did occur after a divorce, and attorney services on behalf of minor children as well. There is one lien record on the joint account of $400. That is, is for assistance from our welfare department and it looks like rent that did happen within the terms of the marriage. What complicates this as well is that on DPNO 65578, the ex-husband is deceased and that he was killed in an accident a couple of years ago. So the likelihood of collecting on that lien is also going to be remote. The one thing I do need to point out that is common between the two liens is that there are two recordings for attorney services on behalf of the children that are in fact duplicates. They were placed against the joint account, you know, because that's where the father's name was, and they were placed against the applicant herself. But they are duplicate charges. And that they're the same charges. And so what the applicant is asking for in this case is that in exchange for a payment of $1,000, is that her lien, DPNO 77332, be discharged in full. And in recognition of that payment, that her name be taken off of the joint account, which is DPNO 65578. Now, as we looked at this, some of you have asked some questions about the two recordings, the $400 for the joint assistance for rent on the account, the joint account, 65578. And then there's another charge for juvenile services that's on the joint account that does not appear on the applicant's account that perhaps should also be recognized as half-responsibility. So some of you have suggested that in order to make sure that that is taken care of, is that perhaps the payment should be adjusted to $1,400 in exchange for getting the name, for, excuse me, $1,400 then for getting rid of DPNO 77332, and then taking her name off the account of 65578. We will deal with 65578 probably at a later time when we start taking a look at discharging liens for deceased persons. But that's the request that you have before you today. Now, the applicant, she did submit some income information. Right now, it would appear that she is unemployed, that most of her income is coming from social security benefits for her and for the minor children. And she did receive an income tax refund, which we've provided you with that information on what that is. But again, her request is for a $1,000 payment. As we look at it, perhaps it would be more fair, as some of you have suggested, a $1,400 payment in exchange for getting rid of the account. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions for Ken? Commissioner Bender.
Mr. McFarlane, I have a process question. The liens that were duplicated on the two accounts, is that, was that a mistake?
No.
Or is that the typical process?
It would have, it would have been the typical process in that if we have, in this particular case, one of the reasons that it was placed on the joint account is because the joint account was originally started when the couple was married. A divorce occurred. We were not aware of that at that time. So when the lien was created to say, look, this lien's going to go against both the father who's responsible for these services and the mother, because the joint account had the father's name on it, that's why it was listed. But we would normally do that in that kind of a situation anyway. When the court has identified that both parents are responsible for these bills, we would have filed a duplicate lien.
So how to, but we don't ever accept double payment?
No.
We would somehow detract so that we, if it gets paid by one party, then it's relieved of the other party?
And typically, what we would have in that situation, once those notices go out, that's when we'd get the phone calls from folks and that's when we would resolve the situation.
Commissioner Kelly?
Were there any assets, do you know there were any assets after the death?
We don't know that yet.
Because those would have to be used to pay off...
And that's why we're suggesting at this juncture that we not do anything with the joint lien, other than if you accept the applicant's request to take her name off. We're not recommending discharge in 65578 at this time.
Madam Chair, I guess I discussed it with Ken and I will make a motion to accept $1,400 from the applicant.
And I'm not sure if the applicant is here or not. I'm not sure.
Is the applicant here? I don't see anybody. I have a motion to accept $1,400.
And leave it, the other part towards the deceased party, which will be cleaned up at a later date.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? I would be, I would entertain the idea of a second if somebody wants a second for me for discussion purposes. Okay. Dies for a lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Can I ask another question?
Yep.
So my understanding is we have the two duplicate payments, or the amounts that are on both accounts. And then I confess, these are so confusing and they get lost in the middle. But it seemed to me like the only cost that was solely for the husband that didn't, wasn't a benefit to the family or wasn't for the children and therefore both parents were responsible for, was in the amount of $1,484.20. Did I have that right?
That would be correct. Each lien account, if you look at the lien account, 65578, the $1,484.20 was for the ex-husband for his attorney representation. These were, all of this representation was in an abuse and neglect case. And so what happens is, is mom gets attorney representation, dad gets attorney representation, and the kids get representation. And so if you look at 65578, $1,484.20 was for dad's representation. The next three, 377.20, 697, and 1943.40 were for the kids. Those last two, 697 and 1943.40, are also shown on the applicant's lien account as a duplicate. So to show that dad's responsible and so is mom. The 377.20 was also for the children. And quite frankly, when I went back and looked at that paperwork, that one should have also been on the applicant's sole account as well. Because the court showed very clearly that they were both responsible for that lien. That's why the commission, some of the commissioners suggested if we're going to do this, we need to hold her responsible for that lien as well. And the $400, again, was for, was simply for assistance when they were both married. And then the other lien account, the 77322, if you look at that, that one, the first recording, is strictly for her representation, her legal representation in the account, in the case. And the other two, 697 and 1943.40, are the duplicates.
Maybe we can just do a rundown of the total. There's 400 that was for rental assistance.
Correct.
Or something. And I'm just trying to get a total of what she would be responsible for and look at the half that would be responsible for her parents.
Sure.
So her and her ex-husband were responsible initially for the 400.
Correct.
Then give me the other one. Don't give me the DPNO numbers. There's too many numbers.
All right. Then the other one that they would be jointly responsible for is 377.20.
Okay.
The other one jointly responsible for is 697. The other one is 1943.40. Those are the ones that they're both jointly responsible for. And that, you know, for, one was for rental assistance when they were married and the other ones are for the kids. So the 397, or the 377.20, the 697, and the 1943.40 are the attorneys for the children. Then on her own lien account, she has an additional for herself, the $1,049, which is just her attorney representation in the case.
So 50% of, if you take the first part, which was her and her parent, her and her husband, so if you split that apart, that's 1708.80.
Correct.
Then that would be 50% of that one. And then 50, but then if you wanted to take, take 50% of that, it'd be $854.40. Am I getting close to this? And then the 1499.
I don't have my calculator.
Sorry. And half of the 1449 is 700 and basically $750.
Commissioner Kelly did have his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Kelly, go ahead.
There's a question for Kirsten, but two years after the fact, there's probably no assets in his estate. I mean, if there was life insurance, that would already have been paid.
Likely.
And so, but somehow, we need to clean up right away that duplication, I think. But where would you take it? You wouldn't want to take it off the joint in case of our assets, but otherwise, you'd probably want to just move it to hers.
What I would advise is even though we know he's a decedent, this will automatically be cleaned up, I believe, during our annual lien review. Is that correct?
We will probably have to add this. We would not have known this because typically, when we, when we get the decedent's list, it's because we've also paid for burial and that. And we didn't do that in this case.
Correct.
And so we did not know that the individual was deceased until this application was forwarded to us and then we got a copy of the death certificate.
I mean, you certainly can, as part of your motion today, though, discharge the whole thing based on a payment of a certain amount then. But the only issue with that is it becomes contingent on the applicant actually paying that amount then.
Correct.
Yeah.
Rather than through the normal lien cleanup process. Just depends how you want to approach it.
Where I was going with my calculator was it actually, if you take 50% of what she, split hers and her ex-husband's, and then take 50% of the amount that she would own, which is what we typically do, and then take 50% of what she herself owned, it comes up to $1,603. Commissioner Barth's motion was for $1,400, which is slightly less than 50% of what she would owe. We would leave those things, we would leave that on the ex-husband until we were able to finish cleaning up the, well, the liens.
Well, is there any reason we can't discharge, the second, there's a second one on both of them? Yeah. Is there any reason we can't discharge that one because that, that attorney for the kids is on her on the first one? Is that right?
I believe there's a portion that actually is not on her individual account that is still a joint obligation. And that's what makes this complicated.
And that's the 377.
Right.
That's the only one that, you know, for the kids, that should have been listed on both accounts that you can tell from whatever, what the court documents say.
The 697?
No. The 377.
Commissioner Barth, did you have a commission?
I heard Gerald clear his throat.
The other thing is if, if we're still struggling with this, do you want to defer to next week to read through it again?
No.
Okay.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept $1,603 in settlement of her, her claim, and then we figure out what to do with his, his claim later.
I will second that.
Does that include taking her name off of the joint?
Yes. Yes. I have a motion and a second for $1,603. And I have a second. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Ben, go.
Actually, I was going to make something similar to what Commissioner Bender said. But the real issue is if you look at her financial statement and the situation that she's in, and her income limits and responsible for children, it'll be difficult for her to even come up with the $1,600. I think it would be a negotiable rate, but I believe that that's the fairest way to do it at this point.
I would also say she did get quite a bit on her tax return for this year. And this is payable over a whole year. So she will have a tax return next year. She doesn't have to pay $1,600 in a lump sum. She can pay it over the next year as long as she gets it done before the deadline of one year. So it'll be a little more than $100 a month. Commissioner Ben, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just pointing it out.
You're absolutely right. But when you figure her total income and what she's responsible for and most of her...
I agree with him.
Revenue comes from the tax return, she's still making less than $7 an hour, which is not even minimum wage. And for her to come up with $1,600 is, I think, a push.
But she does have the money in the bank.
Well, I hate to say this, but when I looked at it the first time, I'm not sure she did the financial statement correctly because she shows a student loan of a significant amount, doesn't show any property at all. So I'm not sure that her note about her liabilities is correct.
We have a motion and a second on the table for $1,603. Any other comments? Do we want a roll call or do we want to just vote?
Madam Chair, let me just make a comment. You know, potentially, she could counter again on us and, or show some good faith in making some good payments on this and then come back to us.
Yeah. That's right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Well, for, well, thank you, Jeff, then. This is an opportunity for public comment if you'd like to talk about anything that is not on the agenda for today. All right. Move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing from the City of Sioux Falls on proposed Washington Square TIF project number 2015A. Brent O'Neal, good morning.
My name is Brent O'Neal. I'm with the City of Sioux Falls Economic Development Division. Here today to present to you an application that we received, TIF application 2015A. It's our first application in this year for TIF to be used. As a more recent practice, when we approached the county commission, we tried to come earlier to give you information in more of a briefing format and certainly take any comments you have and answer any questions you have as best as we can. The other half of kind of our new practice is for the applicants themselves to be here and to do a bulk of the presentation. So with that, I'll give a few notes and then I'm going to turn it over to the team to present their project. I guess the first thing I'd like to do is just tell you contextually what the schedule looks like for the hearing process. Obviously, we're here today with the county commission. The commission will also receive a memo from the city in the coming 10 days or so. It's actually our official notice to the council, the commission letting you know our hearing schedule and that this will be going forward. Probably within about two weeks, our office will form an official recommendation on support, non-support, or a level of support in between. We'll email that over to your staff as well so that can get distributed to you. And kind of the final two points on the schedule, June 3 is when we go to our city planning commission. They're the first step at the city level for approval. And then by mid-June, we'd be taking it to the city council and potentially the first week or so in July is when the, when the council would hear and make a final decision. One last point before I turn it over to the project. Chris Howman, a name some of you might know, they own property downtown, a few different properties, and their family owns the property that you'll be talking about here. They've had a desire for several years to do a project and they, they do have one coming forward. So Sharon Chantos and Rachel Olin, they're both here to give a presentation on the project. At the conclusion of their project, both sides of the city and their team will be able for any questions.
Can I?
Thank you, Brent. And thank you for allowing us to speak to you today.
Sharon, could you just identify yourself for the...
Oh, sure. My name is Sharon Chantos. I'm a resident of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Rachel and I own Sage Project Consultants, and we were part of the team that pulled the TIF application together, along with an independent contractor who is an economist, who helped put the economic stimulus data together. Brent has, per your request, has asked us to just briefly present the Washington Square LLC proposal to build a building down... LLC proposal to build a building downtown. The owners cannot be here today as they had other business obligations, but if you have any questions, we can pass those along to them.
Excuse me, could you pull the mic so that you, right, thank you.
Okay, there. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, so what you have in front of you is a handout like this, and it has the slides on it so you can follow along. So the second slide on the bottom of the first page. So Washington LLC respectfully requests the City of Sioux Falls to designate parcel four three zero three eight as a tax incremental district based on, A, economic stimulus and B, improvement to a blighted area. In addition, there's benefit to public parking, which we'll talk about. So as you can see in the, the, this is a black and white, but it's right on the corner of Twelfth and Main, and it's directly across the street from the Washington Pavilion. The project overview is that the Washington Square LLC is proposing to build an eight to nine-story multi-use building. It will be the first multi-use building in downtown Sioux Falls, whereas it will be retail on the main floor, office space on the second floor, and then condos on the top floors. The real public benefit to this particular building is when the owners were contemplating looking at this building, it's directly across the street from the Washington Pavilion and just right around the corner from the Sioux Falls State Theater. And so while they're building the building, the owners asked the architects to also, when they were putting, pulling together their conceptual drawings, to draw out how many parking spaces that could be used for public parking. At this point, the project is, will be a third, just a little less than thirty million dollars, and that is for the, the entire building as well as the built-out of the housing units on the top three floors. The applicants are asking for four point six six million dollars in, in TIF. So if you turn that page, or, excuse me, on the bottom of the second page, is the fourth slide, and I just want to go over public parking for a few minutes because, again, this is the most significant piece of this project to the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. As you can see in the darker shades, there will be free public parking during the weeknights and the weekends, and there are, as I said before, there'll be two hundred and fifty-eight spots. On the lower level or in the basement of the Washington Square LLC building, there will be sixty-nine spots that will be designated for the housing units. And that's probably optimistic, or, you know, conservative because there'll only be eighteen units, and so we're, it's probably, they'll probably only need forty or forty-five spaces down there, so we're setting aside sixty-nine for the condos. So there'll probably be more than a hundred and eighty-nine spots. This is the peak time of use that these parking spots will be needed. So if you think about going downtown during a weekend or night when the Washington Pavilion has an event going on or there's, the city, Phillips Avenue is blocked off because of hot Harley nights or, or hot summer nights where they block it off, this main street parking becomes the premium. So this will open up quite a bit of parking spots when the Washington Pavilion has its events, and then in the future, when the Sioux Falls State Theater has this event, they have eight hundred seats in their facility, too. Excuse me. There will be available paid parking during the weekday, eight to five. There will be some spaces, and we're right now estimating about sixty, that will be used for office leasing, and that leaves about a hundred and thirty spots for parking. If you turn your page to the top of the third page, in two thousand and fourteen, the City of Sioux Falls enlisted the Walker Parking Consultants, and they conducted a study which was issued last fall, and Walker found that there was a deficit of one thousand one hundred and twenty-four spaces that will, that are projected over the next twenty years based on a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of commercial space and one million square feet of office space in downtown Sioux Falls. This project, when we looked at it, we used the Walker study, and that, it goes into much more detail in the handout that we have, which is the actual TIF application. This particular project is on Block fourteen in SubArea five, and we're predicting, or based on the numbers on the Walker study, that we will increase the parking in SubArea five by ten percent of off-street parking and off-street parking by fifteen percent.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, is there parking, because my understanding was that there wasn't really parking needed in the Washington Pavilion area that was identified in the study, that there was areas of downtown that was needed, but that that parking ramp across from the Pavilion is generally empty during the day. Is that?
I think that that's true during the day. It's not, but when they have events. For example, when we called the Washington Pavilion to talk to them, they have, on some of their first Friday nights, they have up to thirty-five hundred people in the building, and that's over, that overflows as well as the home federal parking lot that's nearby and all of the street parking.
So do you have any idea of how many nights we're talking about out of the whole year?
You know, I'd have to go back and look at it. I would assume whenever the Washington Pavilion and there's some type of, some type of a event downtown. So I would say probably most weekends or weekend nights, yeah. The next slide on the bottom of that same page is, again, just to reiterate what Commissioner Bender was saying, is that there will be free public parking during peak time uses. Again, as I just said, the Washington Pavilion has noted that they've had over thirty-five people on their building at one time. Sioux Falls State Theater will have eight hundred seats, and of course, there's a lot of, as the city is growing, they're doing a great job of hosting other events downtown, which causes closures to Phillips Avenue, parades, hot Harley nights, hot summer nights, et cetera. So going on to another, the second benefit, which is the economic development benefit, what we did is we hired an economist, his name is Franz Wayne, and, excuse me, Fran? Um, excuse me. Actually, what we did is we bought the, excuse me, the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis Regional Input and Output Modeling System Two, called RIMS Two. So the Bureau of Economic Analysis looks at economic benefit in every area of the state, and what we wanted to do was to make sure that when we're doing an economic analysis, that it's, it was geared towards Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Minnehaha County. And so, and doing that, buying the RIMS Two data for the City of Sioux Falls MSA, we could pretty accurately look at or estimate what the economic stimulus would be to the, to the City of Sioux Falls. And this is so, if we use general numbers or rule of thumb numbers, we wanted to make sure we were looking at the City of Sioux Falls versus Fargo or Omaha, Minneapolis, et cetera. As you can see, the net value in GDP based on real estate forecasted is to increase up to five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per year, and that's based on the renting, the retail space as well as the office space. The projected GDP increase within the MSA of Washington Square's construction is over thirty million, of course, and the increased revenue from the tenants in the building has the potential to increase the GDP between twenty-nine and eighty-eight million dollars a year. That's quite a span, and the reason is, is because we had to make some assumptions that somebody, somebody would be moving from another part of Sioux Falls or maybe from another community in the area downtown, therefore it would be a net serial benefit, but if somebody knew should come into town and raise that, or use that office space if they were coming in from Omaha or Fargo, et cetera. And the project has the potential to add fifty to a hundred and fifty new jobs to the Sioux Falls MSA. Of course, during construction, that would raise, in those two years of construction, would be over five hundred jobs. If you turn the page, oh, I'm sorry, that was on the bottom of the same page, on page four. The third benefit is the mixed-use building in alignment with plans. The project fulfills objectives of both the shapes Sioux Falls thirty, twenty-three-five plan as well as the twenty-twenty-five downtown plan through the addition of the parking and retail office and residential spaces totaling over two hundred thousand square feet. And you can see basically what we've done in the slide is show you where we pulled those Again, in order to be eligible for a TIF, you have to meet one or two eligibility criteria. One is economic development, and then the second one is blight. As you can see on the next slide, according to South Dakota eleven dash nine dash eleven under subsection C that speaks to TIF, any area which is predominantly open and which causes, and which because of obsolete plating, diversity of ownership, deterioration of structures, or of site improvements or otherwise substantially impairs or arrests the sound of growth of a municipality is a blighted area. So as you can see in the picture, and there's better pictures than the plan that we handed out, that right now it's basically, if you recall, it's a parking lot, but not only is it a parking lot, it's kind of trunken. So when you look across the street from the Washington Pavilion, basically kind of see a hole right there. At the bottom of the same page is the project tax revenue calculations through payoff. We worked with Director of Equalization from Minnehaha County, Kyle and his staff, to understand how to accurately project what the tax revenue would be. As you know, through a TIF, the, right now they're paying seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and, and that will continue to go to the county, the city, the school district, the water district. However, the increment between that base and the, what, what will go to the TIF district to pay off that is, will be based on what the estimated value would be. So to be conservative, we basically projected that the construction would take two years, two, two and a half years to complete, and then we would discount that value by eighty percent. And as you can see through the table on your worksheet, if you go through and look at the last column, that by year ten or twenty twenty-seven, we would be paying off the TIF of the four point six million dollars. So this is a particularly exciting project for not only the City of Sioux Falls, but also for Minnehaha County, the water district, Sioux Falls School Districts, because they will reap significant tax benefits from this project. So if you turn your page and you look at the top of page six, which is the second of the last slide, without any additional development, as it stands right now, Minnehaha County receives one thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars from this particular project. After the TIF has been paid off, Minnehaha County will receive seventy-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven, or that's what we predict it will do. The Sioux Falls School District will benefit through three hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, Water District five hundred dollars, and the City of Sioux Falls one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Do you have any questions for us or for Brent?
Commissioner Kelly.
Back on the, about three slides, we're at TIF eligibility. Any area which is predominantly open and which is because of obsolete plating, diversity, et cetera, et cetera, where does this fall into that? I don't understand where you get the eligibility based on that definition.
Oh, you mean on the blight area?
Well, if that's what they're calling it.
Sure. So this, like other areas that have been designated as TIF districts in the City of Sioux Falls, is currently an empty parking lot. The, the Howman brothers have owned that half block between Twelfth, Eleventh and Twelfth Street and Phillips and Main Street, and they have done significant updates, particularly to the Boyce Law Firm and the Federal Building that is next door to that, and, but right now, that piece of land which is on the southwest corner of that block is, there's essentially nothing there. So it's similar to other TIF districts in Sioux Falls prior to that.
I'm very familiar with it. I worked across the street there for.
Oh, you did?
Thirty-five years.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm trying to find how this fits into your definition because, one, the ownership issue is not an issue because they own the whole thing. It is a surface lot, been a surface lot for, well, since I came back in nineteen sixty-five. Because we're going to, we're going to forego, well, not forego because there's nothing being paid on it now, but, but essentially, we got about almost three-quarters of a million dollars invested in this parking lot by the taxes we won't get. And my concern is that that property is a good piece of property, active, downtown is active, and if it weren't built for this, it would probably be built for something else. But we, in the meantime, have to subsidize the downtown parking if, if that's the reason they're doing is providing all these free parking places. Is this project undoable without the TIF? I mean, that's, I.
No.
I know they figure out all the expenses, throw the TIF in and say, here's what we have to have.
Yeah.
But I, I just question that we, it'll be ten years before we see that seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
Right. You'll still be getting the same.
I mean, excuse me, I mean, the other thing is you've got two more projects that are on the table for downtown, and I would assume both of those are going to come in and have a request for a TIF because I don't know how you could deny them and not deny this, but.
So to answer your question, Commissioner Kelly, the project, let's see, the TIF financing is critical to this project, and we talk more about this in the executive summary as well as the, the rest of the application. Using conservative assumptions on the annual return, and we've actually put that on the, on the back here as well. So annual return on equity for Washington Square is projected to be negative in year five without the use of tax incremental financing. However, with TIF, the return on investment increases to a much more acceptable positive rate. So, and we put the pro forma on the back as well, so.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I am excited for this project, and I'm appreciative of the fact that the city is letting us know about it. I think the, the issue for us, though, is that it's a bit bittersweet in that we get no revenue out of this, and property tax is our only real source of revenue. And so many of the glowing things that can be said about the project really won't help us out, you know, jobs, we don't get income tax, we don't get sales tax, we get property tax, and, you know, every time there's a parade downtown, we don't get anything except more people in the jail. And so all these, these benefits, we, we take with a little bit of sadness as well. There are real benefits to the, the community and eventually to the county, but these are some of the reasons why we're not jumping up and down with the prospect of this wonderful building.
Commissioner Kelly.
Just to follow up, your, your numbers are based on a thirty million dollar building.
Yes, but then we discounted it by eighty percent.
Okay.
To be conservative. To be conservative.
Are we guaranteed this TIF is going to be paid off in 10 years? I mean, it can stretch out to 20, but if you set the TIF, are you going to set the TIF for 10 years, and whether or not they generate enough tax money, it will be paid at the end of 10 years, the TIF goes away, and the regular taxes come back?
Well, you know, it depends on how much the estimated value is assessed by the Director of Equalization's office.
But what if they only build a $15 million building?
Well, then I think it's a totally
Numbers are all different.
Yeah. Then we'd have to redo our, I mean, everything in here.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
I guess we are going to move on to item number 11, is a consider resolution to declare the 2005 pilgrim trailer, travel trailer an asset. Kristen Tran? Officer Ingerhouse?
Good morning.
That's okay, we'll take you.
Paul Ingerhouse, Captain, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This item is to surplus a 2005 travel trailer to the Turner County Sheriff's Office. This trailer we received back in, I believe, 2007 from the FBI. This is from, I believe, the Fargo floods, where they had surplus trailers, and the Bureau is giving them away to local law enforcement. At that time, we thought that we would utilize that in conjunction with our command post. We do have a similar trailer that we converted to a camera trailer, but we just have not been able to get the use out of it that we think that we thought that we could. And in conversations with Sheriff Nogumire in Turner County, it's something that they can utilize as a command post, as they do not have the resources that we have and the command codes that we share with the police department. So this item is to surplus that to the Turner County Sheriff's Office at no cost to them.
Are there any questions? For a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 12 is authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the 2016 Highway Safety Grant Program. Now, Kristen.
Good morning, Kristen Tran with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I'm bringing to you a couple of grant applications today. The first one is the Highway Safety Grant. We're going to request similar funding as to what we did last year. It's slightly less because of some equipment purchases that we made this year that we wouldn't need to make next year, but we're requesting an 80/20 match on five radar systems, and then also some overtime funds for different mobilizations that would be traffic-related as far as seat belts and speeding, and then also some alcohol-related overtime with things like small-town celebrations, street dances, things like that, that is typically when we get those, also prom and graduations, so.
Are there any questions for Kristen on this first one? For a motion on the safety grant?
So, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is an application for 2015 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
With this one, last year, we actually didn't receive any funding. Their dollars were down, and they were really focusing on very small agencies that would absolutely not be able to provide vests for their staff. It's not a difficult application, so I figure we can try again this year and see if we can get any funding. They do fund up to half of a vest per request. However, it's they still kind of tried to distribute the funds equitably, in their opinion, so we don't get half of ours, but I figure it's not a terrible amount of work to put together the grant application, and anything would help, so.
Any questions on this one? Is there a motion? Make that motion. You have a motion and a second to authorize the Sheriff's Department to submit an application for the 2015 Bulletproof Vest Program. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a consider a motion to supplement $3,810.50 from the building fund to the fairgrounds. Kim Adamson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. I'm here this morning. We're requesting a supplement to the 2015 budget for the fairgrounds. It's in the amount of $3,810.50, and the supplement is necessary to repair some hail damage that was sustained back in June of 2014 on signage at the fairgrounds.
And this is a reimbursement from Midwest Family Mutual Insurance.
I'll make that motion, I do have a question.
Motion and a second. Question, Mr. Barth?
Ken, we were pending some claim on the roof repair due to the hail damage. Has that happened yet?
Commissioner, we just had a meeting with the Barry Crane with Perspective and Scott Wick to go over some of the final bid specification documents to put that project out to bid due to the dollar amounts involved. And so we did find some errors that the insurance adjuster had made as far as roof size and scope that also need to be incorporated into the bid specifications, but we expect that we will be bringing you those specifications for authorization to publish very, very soon. And our target date to have the repairs completed is by October, because we got the extension from the insurance company to do so.
Well, thank you. I was just hoping this was the final insurance adjustment on fixing all of that. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on that supplement. Are any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kim. Item number 15 is a briefing on the Needs Assessment Report produced by Barry Dunn. Monty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach with the County IT Department. If you recall, last fall, you signed an agreement with Barry Dunn to have their experts come and review our core accounting and payroll applications here at the county. In January, they distributed a web-based survey to get feedback from county employees to just kind of get that feedback as far as what they liked, what they didn't like, and that kind of thing. In January, they also came on site and conducted interviews with the Auditor's Office, Treasurer's Office, the Highway Department, Equalization, to name a few. And I think everyone received that very well. They were, they asked a lot of very intelligent, in-depth questions, and documented our processes and procedures here at the county. And ultimately, they wrote up a report and identified that a lot of our legacy S100-based applications are in need of improvement, which is kind of why we engaged them, is because we identified there's areas where we could modernize our software. So with that, they wrote up a Needs Assessment Report with five different options, which I'll touch on briefly. But I'll just caution you that at this point, there's not pricing in the Needs Assessment Report that comes in the action plan, which is the next phase of the project. We're expecting that later this week. So with the five different options that they proposed, the first couple are basically just kind of keep the applications that we have, or keep the applications that we have and try to internally improve them, which is, you know, just kind of maintain status quo, I guess. And obviously, there's disadvantages of that. And then when we get to options three, four, and five, they have options to purchase just a accounting package and not an HR package, or an HR package and not an accounting package. That's basically what option three is. Option four, and this, you can find this on that executive summary on page six. Option four would be to issue an RFP for an integrated accounting and HR application. So I think the concept behind that option is that it would be one RFP that one vendor would have to respond to. So that one vendor would have to have a solution that has all of the core accounting and payroll options together. And sometimes, some of these companies have really good HR packages, but maybe don't have any accounting applications, or maybe don't have strong accounting applications. So that option four would really be looking for a vendor that has a full suite of those accounting and HR payroll applications all together. Option five would be to issue multiple RFPs for accounting and HR. I think the concept behind that is we would look for those best-of-breed accounting applications and best-of-breed HR applications. The challenges with that would be that you probably wouldn't have as good of integration between them. So my conversations with them have kind of been really more around option four, which is to kind of find an all-encompassing application that has better integration. And I think, you know, we're really anticipating, as I'm sure you are, the next phase of this project, which is the action plan. How much is this going to cost? How can we integrate it into some of the applications that we have? What are the timing of, what is the timing of some of those projects? How can we roll it out in phases? That's all still yet to be determined. And we anticipate that action plan to be available towards the end of this week. We anticipate to present that at the May 19 budget overview. So with that, any questions that you have for me?
Questions for Monty at this point? Commissioner Barth?
So, Monty, what's our next steps on this?
Next steps are for Barry Dunn to deliver us the action plan, which is later this week. And that action plan should have some estimated costs in it based on projects that they've worked on with other local governments our size. They're going to try to find other local governments our size that they've worked with that have, you know, gone through this process. And that action plan will kind of lay out, you know, how we would start to fund this project and some timing for it, you know, can we do this in phases so we can fund a portion of it, you know, upfront, and then maybe implement and pay for other parts of it down the road. So really, it's the action plan that Barry Dunn will deliver here soon, and then figure out how we can start funding these projects. And then if we can get that funding going, it would be probably an RFP that we would create. I would recommend utilizing Barry Dunn for that RFP process. You know, again, like I said at the beginning, I was very impressed with their level of expertise, knowing the, all the software in the industry, and being very familiar with the, all the, you know, aspects of local government and the accounting pieces that we have. So I would recommend engaging them as well when we go through that RFP process.
Any other questions for Monty? Commissioner Kelly?
Monty, excuse me. Eventually, we're going to have to replace all, is that fair to say, or at least the financial and the payroll?
And HR, yeah.
If we went that route of four or five, would we do this over a five-year period? Or, I mean, is this something that has to be all done at the same time, or can it be spread over?
I'm very much anticipating how they recommend that as well. I think it will be over a period of time, I just don't know what it is, and, you know, I'm anxious to get together with them once they have that action plan as well, because there certainly is some challenges in my mind if we roll it out over time. How do we integrate with some of our current applications if we don't have everything rolled out at once, so.
If I may, this is kind of like building a building. I mean, this is a project that's going to last us for a long time.
Absolutely.
And so we kind of have to look at it like, if we were going to build a million-dollar building, you know, how would we do it? We wouldn't pay for it in one year, and I think that's the way we need to look at this thing, is that it's really a capital, it's not a software upgrade, it's a capital expense.
It is. You know, I look at a solution like this, and, you know, it's at minimum a 10-year decision that we're about to embark on here, that it's going to be a significant investment, not only upfront, but there is, you know, long-term maintenance costs that go along with these kind of solutions. So it's a huge decision, and I think we've made the correct steps so far to, like I said, engage Barry Dunn with that, and I would encourage us to do that in the RFP process as well. It is a very big decision. And how some of our other applications integrate with this still remain to be seen. We would make great progress with our timesheet application that we've developed internal that I think, for the most part, has received very good response back from county employees. It's an updated Windows application, but it integrates in a little bit with our purchased payroll application, and how will we integrate that in with some of these other components? Or will we? So a lot of questions still remain.
Can we leave this on Dropbox? I mean, you know, next week, you start reading some of this stuff. Is there any way we could have this report sit?
It'll be on for sure for one more week, because we leave it on.
Yeah, but I'm thinking long-term. I mean, if we wanted to look back at it during budget time, I think it'd be worthwhile to leave it on the Dropbox as far as that.
Any other questions for Monty? Commissioner Vender?
Monty, just because I'm kind of new to the ballgame, and I wasn't here when Barry Dunn was retained, I'm just curious if you could give a little background, do they specialize in governmental entities? What kind of expertise do they bring to the table?
So really, they specialize in these kind of engagements. They work a lot with local government. I couldn't, I don't believe they focus solely on local governments, but I just know that they work a lot with local governments, both strategic planning, strategic planning for local government, these kind of projects, facilitating an RFP projects. I would suspect they also work with private sector companies as well, but certainly, there's a number of local governments that I'm aware of that they've engaged with, as well as, you know, information they've told me. Yeah, they have a lot of experts, again, that are accounting, in the accounting field. And again, they're familiar with all of the large players as far as the software vendors that make solutions. And there's a handful of them, but they're familiar with those different solutions.
Ken, has a comment?
They do the same process for the cities.
Yes, they did do the same process with the city of Sioux Falls. They've had some projects with Pennington County and Rockford City, I believe, one of the two for sure, if not both. Scott County, Iowa, they did a strategic plan and do those every year often for them. So instead of a strategic plan, this is really more focused on, we know we need to make change, so instead of having a more broad strategic plan, how do we improve our core financial and payroll applications and evolve those? This is a little bit, a lot more focused than a strategic plan would be, but very similar in certainly what they specialize in. There's not a lot of companies that do this.
Any other questions?
I just, I mean, I'd just like to make the comment that I thought the report was very well done. It was a great overview for me personally, just of all the different processes that are in place, and it's hard to kind of get a grasp on that from a kind of high-level perspective. That's why I was curious about their background, because it does seem like they have a good grasp of how the, all the different areas kind of interrelate.
I certainly speak with, on behalf of our team here, when I say we were all impressed with them. And I think that was the general feeling from all the county staff that had interviews with them, because, you know, they're just very fluent with all the payroll aspects that we have to do, and it was very apparent that they were very knowledgeable in all of those different pieces and components, and very fluent with modern software, case management software, and workflow for CRM or ticketing type of applications and all of those different components. The one thing that we went through, just as an example, that was something they didn't have a lot of experience with, I was a little bit surprised, but weren't familiar with some of the big software companies that have a solution for lien applications. So that's really still on our radar, because I've already got kind of the idea from the So that's really still on our radar because I've already got kind of the idea from them that a lot of these companies, you know, Tyler Technology and New World and those various different vendors that have these solutions, that they didn't have a lean application. And the lean application that we use is kind of a legacy AS100 application developed many, many years ago, decades ago, that probably needs some modernization. Doesn't make leans any, any simpler. It's a very complicated thing to manage. But I think from a software perspective, you know, that's something that, that needs updating. We know it's probably going to fall outside of this project. And there's certainly other things that fall outside of this project as far as law enforcement software, case management software for, for the attorneys that we've been working on. Falls outside of the scope of this. So there's just a lot of, a lot of applications that need upgrading. We've made a lot of progress, but these core financial ones are, are so important and critical that I think we're taking the right steps here.
Okay. Any additional questions? Commissioner Bender?
Monty, just a thought. Before we make an option choice, if you will, with the options they presented, is there a possibility of us to get references from them and maybe either make contacts with people that are users and even potentially site visits to make sure that all of our questions are answered before we choose which program we're going to use?
Yeah, I think that would be a part of an, an RFP process when we go through that vendor selection. As far as choosing, you're saying an option, do we choose, you know, one? So even before the RFP process, is there?
I think that's important.
Yeah, and that's something that we could potentially do on our own without assistance. We certainly can reach out to, you know, Pennington County, which we have on some other things as well. And we can reach out to some other local governments. I think you see certainly a mix when, when you do that, when I've done that in the past, of people doing things. Everybody's inventing their own wheel.
Right.
And I see that a lot. But you will see some consistencies as far as, you know, a lot of local governments using vendor XYZ for this, but the entire suite of applications is not going to be consistent from one county to the next. But we certainly, I think that's a great idea and certainly something that we could do to choose one, one of those options before we go to the RFP process.
The other question I would have or suggestion would be that maybe we consider talking to the city and asking them about their experiences, but more importantly, the potential, if you will, of upgrading equipment and using database, if you will, of not only their expertise but our own, so that we could do some consolidation of IT services.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can look at that a little bit. The city of Sioux Falls went through this very similar process here, probably within the last year or two, and have several of these components. Obviously, city government and county government are different in some aspects. The biggest one for us is just that tax collection piece is a responsibility of the county. And there's, there's a lot to that component. And, you know, are we going to have the integration with the solution that the Equalization Office already has? Or is there going to be a disconnect there? Because that, that software solution that the Equalization Office has is something that they're very ingrained into. Getting out of that software solution to something else is a very difficult and time-consuming process. They're, they have been using two systems for various different reasons for, for a very long time. So just even for them to evolve into the pro ballot solution that they have today has taken a long time. And, and part of that is because there's specific sketches and drawings of, of properties that are kind of proprietary to that software solution. So migrating data from one application to, to another application is, is very doable. But those sketches and some of that stuff is, is very difficult. So although there might be some integration options possible, we also have some things that are unique to us that are, that are part of our responsibility as well. But, and I have touched base a little bit with the city of Sioux Falls on their project and, and I'm a little bit familiar with some of the things that they've implemented and some of the pros and cons of their, their new solution. We certainly can put together a more formal review and sit down with them.
I just think the time to ask those questions is right now rather than waiting down the road to find out if we, if we could do some integration.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Monty? All right. Thank you, Monty.
Thanks for your time.
In the interest of a department head's timeframe, you're going to move item number 20 up to next. And item number 20 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaw County and the Paramedics Plus for the deceased transport services. And Dr. Snell, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. As you know, the rural metro, as of May 21st, will no longer be transporting within the city limits for emergency purposes. They've had our transport contract for decedents, what, two years now? Two or three years now. Of course, with the exit of rural metro, that puts us as, what are we going to do? Paramedics Plus, we met with them. They agreed for the next year to assume that contract at the same price. However, when they were looking at everything, they didn't realize they were going to have to provide the body pouches for our transport. So we went ahead and said for the first year, we will do that. But what we want to do in fairness to everybody is at the end of one year. So this time next year, we would put this out as an open bid, same thing we did two or three years, I guess it's three years ago, and put it back out for a bid at that time. So what we're asking is, is you guys to agree just for one year, sign off on it at the price. We really have been good about keeping our budget under control with that transport issue since we went to this contract. Actually, was at a meeting last Friday, talked with a couple of funeral homes. There were some of them that bitted on it back when we did this originally. They were asking the question, who is going to transport for the coroner's office starting May 21st? And we said, well, we're proposing this. And the funeral homes were happy with that proposal. So as of right now, everybody seems to be in agreement, this would be the best thing for us. Again, we do want at the end of this one year to put it back out for a bid because we don't want to have to continue to provide the body pouches because originally that was part of the agreed-upon price. So in a year, we want to address that.
Any questions for Dr. Snell? I'm just, Commissioner Kelly?
Would it make any sense to have this concurrent with ambulance license renewals also, which is, I believe, December 31st next year? Doesn't make any difference?
Okay.
And the way, the way, just so you know, the way the original contract was written is if everybody was happy for it, it just kept getting renewed. And we've had no problems until just recently, rural metro, they changed to a new billing company. We're having trouble getting that situated and straightened out and paying, we really haven't paid transport bills since October. And it's simply a billing, internal billing issue. They're wanting to bill us the full price of a transport instead of the contract agreed-upon price. And we're having trouble with that. But we've had no problem with this. Just once we agree on it, it's going.
Do you see any budget, like you might have to supplement your budget this fall because just, or this winter because of the body bag purchases?
No, we've already processed that. It was a one-time purchase order, which has already gone through. We actually already have the pouches. Lindy Young is storing them for me. We have everything ready to hand over to them. And they told us that once this contract was approved, they would then take receipt of those body pouches. So kind of just waiting on this to get signed off on it by everybody.
Any other questions? For motion?
Paramedics Plus is here.
If you have any questions for Paramedics Plus.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for your time.
We'll go back to item number 16. Is it consider a resolution to delete a bridge structure? D.J. Boothey. No, he's here. He's here.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This item is to delete a bridge off of our NBI, our NBI. The NBI is the National Bridge Inventory. It's an inventory that's kept throughout the United States and for all structures. And the Minnehaw County, right now, I think we have 197 prior to today. And we're undergoing a construction project just west of Crooks right now where there's a large box culvert that is considered a structure and a bridge immediately adjacent to one another. We have removed both of those structures and in their place, we are creating one structure. And so at the end of this, we will not need two structure numbers. We will only need the one structure number. So the action today is to formally delete one of those structure numbers from NBI.
Make a motion to delete this bridge structure from the National Bridge Inventory.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a bid award for project, let's you do it.
This is for a bid award for Project MC Bridge Railings 2015. It's a heavy maintenance contract that we have set up through our consultant Banner Associates. And per the commission's authorization, we opened bids and have received one bid for this contract. The engineer's estimate was $305,000. I'll stress that trying to estimate a heavy maintenance-type contract is very difficult and, and they're very different from estimating a new construction-type of project. So we had an estimate of $205,000 that seemed to be, that we received was $360,526. That is quite a bit more than our estimate, but we've reviewed it. We've spoken with the contractor. We're comfortable with this bid. And so we are hoping to get your approval for that contract today. It's to replace or rehabilitate railing on 11 different structures throughout the county that were identified on our bridge reports.
Okay, this is item number 18 when we're talking about railings.
Did I skip forward?
Yep, you skipped 17, so...
You heard that spiel. All right.
Yep.
Sorry about that. This is for MC Bridge Bearing 15, and this is to replace failed bearings on three bridges. Again, the same as the last one. This is difficult to estimate. We had a final cost estimate of $105,000 on this contract. And we received three bids and, and it shows that they are difficult to estimate because the three bids that we received ranged from $76,619.45 with our low bidder to over $191,000 with our high bidder. So the second, or the middle bidder was $168,000. So we have spoken with Sioux Falls Construction or Journey Group is, is what they're named now, and we are comfortable awarding this one. And we look forward for your approval on this contract.
I would move that bid award to Journey Group.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Number 18 is the railing, which we just had the briefing on.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract on the railings.
There's a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J. Item number 19 is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Stockyards Plaza Incorporated and Suland Heritage Museums. Bill Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director, Suland Heritage Museums. This is a project that would be for the Suland Heritage Museums to design, produce and install exhibitions in the horse barn in Falls Park. Stockyards Plaza, Inc., Jim Wooster's group has been working with the city parks department on a concept where they would occupy the horse barn in Falls Park, install exhibits on the history of the stockyards, and then operate that facility. It's also part of a project with the city, which would include a, a new park developed across Weber from Falls Park. And, and this is one phase for that. This is a project that our staff would undertake. All expenses and revenues would be handled through the enterprise fund budget. It's typical of projects we've taken on before and will help us pay for our own exhibits at the old courthouse in Pettigrew in 2016-17.
Any questions for Bill on this project? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Item number 20, we have completed. Item number 21 is liaison reports. Are there any reports? Okay. Item number 22 is new business. Is there any new business? Item number 23 is old business. Oh, Ken, did you have new business? Sorry.
I think you could go on either or. I just want to remind the commission that one of the things that's on your calendar of upcoming events is a briefing next week at 10:30 immediately following the commission meeting concerning, it's the preliminary, and I want to stress preliminary, budget overview and some of the long-range planning forecasts that we see coming down the pike as you prepare yourselves for budget hearings and that. So the auditor's office is busy taking a look at forecasted revenues and that, that we'll have going into the budget season. And we'll also give you kind of a snapshot of where we see some of the major projects coming down the pike, both in terms of personnel, equipment, those kind of issues. And that as you prepare yourself for budget hearings. So that's scheduled for 10:30.
Okay.
One of the things that we've laid on your desk, this is as we prepare for the actual budget hearing process through June and July. And I know, and what we've done is we've tried to identify those times where we have, all five of you have indicated your availability and that, and then where we have four, at least four commissioners available during, beginning the 9th of June all the way through July 3rd. And again, this is important because you do need to adopt a provisional budget by the end of July. So one of the things I hope we can do here very shortly is to identify some specific times that you'll conduct budget hearings so we can get those on the calendars and start notifying department heads. One of the things that is still outstanding, if you look at that June 9th meeting, you know, we're looking at the budget overview itself when we have all the final numbers, you know, that we've put together the official budget for your consideration, you know, doing that briefing either at 10:30 or 6 o'clock that night and that. So we just need to get whatever your preference is going to be for that, for that initial budget overview. So at any rate, like I said, it's just something we need to finalize shortly and start getting those on the calendar.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment about the budget. You know, last year, we suggested to legislators that they attend our meetings and help us look at the difficulties that our budget sometimes can bring. And we only had one legislator show up for one meeting. I guess I'd like to throw that invitation out again and ask actually anybody, including legislators, citizens, whatever, to attend our meetings and help us craft a budget that works for everyone.
I did talk to Ken yesterday about drafting a letter to send out to all our, our Minnehaw County representatives and senators and asking them to come to our budget hearing. And he does have something in mind. And with your okay, we will move forward with that. And it needs to be done. And with us being part of their summer studies, hopefully, some of them will show up. And I don't know if they know the people on that summer study yet.
We've seen religion.
If we get a list, there would be another group to invite to our budget hearings. Any other new business? Old business?
I have some old business, and that is to, to wish Commissioner Bender a happy birthday.
Yeah, that's a very old business. Very old.
I thought about noon, I thought, nope, that's pretty old business. So happy birthday, Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. We have no executive session today, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, just quickly, last time I wished Commissioner Kelly happy birthday on his birthday, he later complained to me.
Well, I was just trying to make Commissioner embarrassed, Commissioner Bender. Meeting adjourned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Oh, we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.